There's the sign and chief, just as you walked in.
Alright, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, welcome everybody to the June 4th zoning board of appeals meeting. We always start out with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. All right, a few housekeeping things first. If ever it's needed, there's emergency exits on the other side of the atrium and either side of the boardroom. We haven't needed that ever, so I hope we don't today. The process of what we're going to do today, which I mentioned a few minutes ago, but not everybody who's here. We're gonna do a few housekeeping items up front here, and then we're gonna follow up and start calling up the applications. When we call your application, please come up to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone for the record. At which point we will start asking questions about the variance that you're here to to request. Based on the findings of those questions, information from the audience and people that might have other comments about it as well. We will make a decision and decide if that variance meets the requirements and standards that we typically look for. Or if we ask for some modification to that, all of these things are optional or denial is an option as well. And so these are all things that we'll be discussing during this process. So I will go to our attendance. Robert Peckham, present, Beth Mossworth.
Present.
John McGloraney.
Here.
Christian Chamberlain.
Here.
Heather Robinson and Timothy Harrington are absent. And Aaron Lehman.
Present.
With that, we can maybe get a request for the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for approval of the May 7th minutes.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Beth, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained, aye. Uh, with that, I guess we can start out with application 2025-037, which is at 37 Gate House Trail. Anybody here? Heather, I don't think so, but is anybody online?
I have two attendees online, but I don't recognize either of the names. So I'm not quite sure where she's at.
Okay, we'll go back to that one if we need to. Uh, next is 2025-0.
One second, Bob. There's a raised hand, hold on. Um, the person with the email address, go ahead and speak. Are you Barbara?
Yes, it's Barb Garringer.
Okay, let me make you as a panelist, hold on one second. You just have to accept it and you'll be able to speak with the board, ma'am. Barbara, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I was just letting you know that that I am here and that that was my email.
We'd like you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Barbara Garringer, 37 Gate House Trail.
Barbara, please tell us what your plans are with this shed and give us a little more description. I know we have a visual of this. Um, we've seen the pictures that you submitted, but tell us why you're asking for this and and also about removal of the other shed is is part of this process too, and the trees and things like that. I'd love to hear all of that.
Um, yeah, so I'm hoping that we won't have to remove trees. But we may in there, um, like our varieties. But the plan is that it'll go right next to my current garage behind the our varieties. And if we do have to remove them, you know, my next permit is going to be for the white vinyl stockade fence. So it'll be blocked by that and then we'll plant new trees. So it is 14 by 20, I believe. And yeah, I just don't want any other sheds. I just want to have that it'll sort of, you know, look like it's in addition to the garage or something, and then I won't have anything else on my property.
Uh, your request says it's 12 by 20, is that?
12 by 20, that's it, sorry.
Okay, so you're looking for a 240 square foot shed in total?
Yes, yes.
Um, now this looks like it's a garage type door. Is this the exact style shed that you're looking at?
Yes.
It's in our documents, okay?
Yeah, so I, it's a garage style door because I want to, uh, right now I have a back garage door. And I want the same thing on that, so I can drive the lawnmower in and out without hitting anything.
Do you plan on running power or anything to this?
I might at some point, but not right at the moment.
And again, this will fulfill your need as far as not needing more space. How much bigger is it than your? How much bigger is it than your current one? I cannot remember the answer to that.
I want to say the the current one is 10 by 10.
Okay, so it's almost double, it's over.
Yeah, and yeah, and you know, I have, I have a pool, a hot tub, um, you know, the lot riding lawnmower, the regular lawnmower. So I just, I want to be able to put my car in my garage, which my garage will just bear, or my car will just barely fit in there. So everything else will have to go into this shed.
Okay. Any questions from other board members? Any questions from members of the audience? Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christine Jubey. I live at 15 Gate House Trail. I guess my, it was a little confusing when I originally read this because it says it's going to be in the backyard, but I guess it's going to be in the side yard.
Yes.
Next to the garage. So I'm wondering how far away is it going to be from the property line? And I'm, so I I sort of more had questions than anything else, just how far away it's going to be from the property line. And there really isn't an explanation given for why it needs to be in the side yard rather than the backyard. Cause it looks like there was a shed in the backyard. That says it's no longer standing, so I'm wondering why that shed couldn't go where there was a previously a shed. So I guess there's, there's no real explanation about why it needs to be in the side yard instead of the backyard, which I think would be more appropriate.
A quick answer, I'm sorry.
One moment for, for, the other thing is there is a shed there right now in the spot.
Yeah, on the side, yeah. But there was an existing shed in the back, which is now gone.
It looks like that's the case according to the.
It's been gone for years and years. It was just like an A-frame little playhouse kind of thing when we moved in. Um, and that's been gone for years. So the current shed that we have is pretty close to where this one will be going. And the reason for that is because like right now my backyard is a swamp. So I can't put anything out in the yard until like midsummer.
I know that feeling. So again, my, my other question would be, how far is this going to be from the property line?
I don't see that number, do you know that number?
Yeah, it's five feet.
And it's four.
Yep.
And there's currently a fence there on the property line, which will stay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Any other questions for members of the audience? Yeah, we, we feel good about this? Okay, so with that, we can close this application and hold on a moment. Hopefully stays open. With regards to application number ZBA 2025-037 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information and has considered the potential benefits to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. This variance does not result in an undesirable change. It will blend in nicely on the side of the house and replace an existing shed. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. But another, another way, because it needs to be off the driveway and it fills the space already used by a shed, it will be replacing. The variance requested is not substantial. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. It will have minimal if change from the existing structure that's already there. And the difficulty relating to the variance was self-created. The change is self-created, but it's minimal and will fulfill their needs. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Beth, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I should have also said, just for the information of the people here. If the motion carries, that means if it's good, that means we have approved it. And documentation will be sent out to you from the town, you'll still have to finish your application process.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. Uh, next one is 2025-038 on Martin Road, 1220 Martin Road. Welcome.
Hi, uh, my name is Thomas Forella and I live at 1220 Martin Road.
Welcome. Welcome, so, uh, the shed that you you want to put in there, it's, it's just a smaller shed. I read all your stuff there and everything. And that's going to suit all the, because the building that we approved last night is pretty large.
I mean. It is, um, when we approved that building, I had an existing wood shed on the property that has since collapsed. Um, so I'm replacing the collapsed building with a smaller one. That previous building was 327 square feet, because it was 140. And I feel like in hindsight, we should have written the variance to include the space of that building and then we probably wouldn't need this, but.
You're going to be sent, putting any electricity out there or anything?
No.
And you're going to put, you're going to put concrete or just like a crack?
There was, I have the benefit of an old farmhouse, there was a concrete pad there, so I'm putting it right back on top.
What are you going to be storing on that?
Yeah, wood splitter, firewood, shovels, uh, chainsaws, that type of stuff.
The dirty stuff.
The dirty stuff.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from members of the audience? Mike, you gotta look. Okay.
Look it over.
With that, I, we can, we can close this application.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to application number ZBA 2020 20235.
2025038. Yeah, we want to start there. We'll fix that.
038 for an area variance I move to approve, whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held public hearings, has considered all the relevant information and has considered the potential benefit to the application versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or immunity in relation to such variance. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of facts. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to characteristic of the neighborhood. He's adding another shed there because there wasn't a shed there previously that is no longer there and he's replacing it. Uh, the variance can be achieved by some other feasible alternative, but the applicant is looking for a smaller shed to store yard equipment and tools. And the property is on a two acre lot. The variance resulting resulted is not substantial. The variance will not have a negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Apple kid is going to use it for all his yard equipment and dirty equipment. So he doesn't have to worry about it in his main barn. The difficulty related to the variance was self-created. And be a further result that the base, based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves as presented.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Christian, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thanks.
Thank you. You're free to go.
You can leave, we'll let you out of here.
Do it to here.
Next. Next is ZBA 202025-039 and 040, which is at 32 Hill Terrace. Welcome.
Hi, David Galoppo, 32 Hill Terrace.
Welcome.
This is Anne Slattery, it's the same address.
Got it. Um, it looks like you have two applications, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll let you go. Okay, sorry, you're fine. You're the one that has to be the chair. So we spoke on the phone today for a little bit. About your application and the first thing I'll ask is, do you have anything else you'd like to add to your application?
We can't answer that.
You're right. I guess, is there anything you'd like to speak to, to your application before we start asking questions?
I don't think so.
So he's asking for two, you're asking for two variants, right? A 30, a large pole barn, 32 by 30 and the offset of 35 feet versus 60.
Right, right.
Yes, yeah. We're feeling that.
There is a second garage.
Right.
Oh, second garage. Thank you.
35 foot.
35 feet.
But then the setback is on the backside of the property.
Right, yeah. And in the right way, apparently.
No, that, I'm not sure.
Well, there's a power line there.
Power lines.
Well, it looks like there's a power line there.
Is that a utility right of way?
It's original.
I mean, there's a pop, there is a power line there, right?
Yeah, but it's closer to the house than.
Correct.
It's about halfway, yeah, in between the.
Yeah, that's what.
That's right down the survey.
So at your, and I'm cutting it, I'm, at your house, I noticed that some of the trees are cut down out back with higher stumps for right now. And it looks like there's orange posts in there. Is that the boundary of your proposed garage?
I was just looking, yeah, I was, I put some stakes in the ground.
That's sort of the estimate of which will, would be.
Yeah, there was, because there's a couple of trees, so I was trying to put it in between the trees. That's kind of why there's some boundaries there, the line, the trees, the, the power lines there. That's why, like the 35 foot distance that I came up with, the estimated distance for the setback.
Okay, so that's, so at least we have, uh, some groundwork for where it, where it sits, at least proposed. And, uh, and some of your offsets that you're asking for. Okay.
I can show, one thing I can show. The builder that I had reached out to, they did a couple of, quickly did a couple of 3D images for us.
If you, okay, if you submit those, but we'd have to keep them.
That's fine.
Okay.
This may not be perfect, but this gives you a visual idea, because if it's, I don't know, if it's worth it to submit.
But this is up to you. We're, we're going to be asking a lot of questions about the use of the, the barn or the, the pole barn and, uh, you know, we do have a line drawn, so you don't have to necessarily give it to us. It looks like you want to keep that. Go ahead, Aaron, I'm sorry. We got to ask the questions of what their, uh.
Yeah. Perhaps I'll start with the, the setback one first. Is, um, because I think that may be the easier one to discuss quickly. The setback, uh, if you were to put the structure, uh, with the 60 foot setback, would it still fit within your property area that you could place this structure or no?
The one issue is I was trying to keep larger trees. Two larger trees, there's one right at the road and then there's one closer to the power line. So I'm trying to keep those trees, so 60 feet is a bit of a Okay. Stretch.
Can I ask a question?
But we, yeah, we also wanted to ask.
About the, the setback, it's, it's, uh, Churchill Road is a town road.
The setback's on the property though, so it's a.
How much, yes.
What you're.
When you have a town road, from what I read in the regulations that you, you have, so that you can have a 40 foot setback on a town road.
Then that'd be for new construction, your, that subdivision was set at 60 feet. You look at the rest of the houses that come, Churchill.
Okay.
They're all set back at 60.
Oh.
So I asked, will I use the subdivision map or anything new? And I forget what year it was, 125. Stepbacks, town roads, you're right, it is 40 feet, that's right.
Oh.
New, new stuff.
So, um, so.
Continue. So it sounds like, uh, to keep your existing lot the way you want it, you need to infringe on the setback. That's why you're asking for that setback.
Yeah, I think there could be a little bit of leeway there. Could make it 40 feet, I think, pretty easily, but to go from 40 to 60 or 35 to 60 is quite a, quite a bit.
Okay. Does anybody else want to ask questions about the right of ways, we maybe keep this a little organized? There's setback, sorry.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I think the more questions are going to do.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I think the next one, which is the more complicated variance, is that you're asking for the second garage. I guess first, maybe we can start out by asking, uh, why the need for the second garage?
Because I have too many vehicles, I guess. I have one, we have three now and we actually have a fourth one in storage. So the burnt garage that we have is pretty, pretty small with full size, full size pickup truck doesn't even fit in there. So that was one reason for it. There's some extra area for store, tool storage and working around the vehicles. The size could probably be reduced a little bit. And for the height of it, the, I was looking in the future, maybe in the future, if I wanted to do a lift in the garage, that was why I was asking for a 12 foot, um, wall size. And I, I didn't know about the heights at the time until like today, about the height of the house and the height of the building. I didn't know any of that until like today, we, we talked on the phone and I've been doing a little bit more.
It is pretty high, so it's 18 feet high and so we have, uh, so, so what type of, I got to ask first, what type, so it's mostly cars or is it other vehicles as well?
Cars, okay.
And you have four now, you have a two car garage, I understand the truck thing. I also have a house that with a truck that I can't fit in the garage comfortably. I park out in the driveway, but, uh, those are the main things that you're trying to put in there, cars and lawn stuff, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, one of the, one of the benefits, I guess, too, is it is a shared driveway that we have now, it's on a pretty steep, steep hill. So the winter time is pretty, pretty, it's a bit of a challenge there and it gets a little congested there and being a shared driveway in the garage.
Shared with your neighbor?
Yeah, yeah.
Property.
I didn't realize that one. Oh. Yeah.
Kind of unusual on property, going back to the second row, that's kind of unusual. Well, I think last year I started this process with some questions, so they said it was unusual having you know, the property.
The full length road. Yeah, on a block. What else are you thinking, Aaron?
So, uh, I guess my question too revolves, and I'm not quite sure, this might be more of a question for Kevin. It shows a stone driveway going to this garage. Is it because it's a second garage that it wouldn't require an asphalt driveway?
This would actually would require a, you are, no, road red. So road residential actually allows for.
Still.
Stone drivers.
Okay.
Um, I'll tell you, all of us, I think all of us on the board are sort of shocked by the scale that you're asking for. Um, it's, it's like 65 or 70% of the size of the house, give or take for the garage alone out back. And it's something that I have reservations about. I, I understand the desire, I'd love a humongous garage too, I think that's awesome. I just don't think it's fitting, in my opinion, in the neighborhood. And so for me, um, you know, and there's big sheds, like there's one earlier or big garages, there's one earlier, but they're almost three acre plot instead of a three quarters. And I think it's excessive in scale. I do understand the desire at the same time, but I think it's excessive in scale for the neighborhood. Um, now you had mentioned earlier that you could even consider, um, two things that you said. One is that you consider being farther away, so less setback. And two was you mentioned that you would consider a smaller a smaller garage. For us, that's very important because I believe without, you know, we had a workshop earlier, you might have heard part of it. I believe that this is not something that we will approve as stands. I, I could be proven wrong, we could run a vote on it at this moment, but, um, I don't think it's going to pass as stance, it's too large, in our opinion, and it's not in character with the neighborhood. Um, I didn't see any other facilities on the, on the block, on either block, front or backside of the block that had similar structures even close. Um, and so this is something that we're really looking to figure out how we can come to either an agreement, you know, something different scale or, um, or if we approve it at all. And so we definitely need, we definitely need to figure out something that's, that's not the size, in my opinion. I think that's what's going to come about in a vote. And I haven't even asked for the, for the community to make a comment yet, because that'll be something that I suspect will hear. I'm not sure of that, um, but it's something that we, uh, you know, we need to address. Um, and again, I repeat to you very clearly, the house is beautiful, all that stuff is nice. I see why you're, I understand why you're asking for it, but it definitely is not in character with, with what we believe is the case, the case of the neighborhood. Or in, in line with the neighborhood, per se. Um, the other thing is, it is extremely tall and the, and a lift makes sense if that's what you're trying to put in. I hope there's a way to get it shorter than 18 feet, because I think it's, it's footprint and height that's problem in my mind for that location. So I'm just giving you my two cents, I'm one of five that's here today. Um, and it's a, it's a vote, it's not a, it's not a, you know, I'm not mandating it, but it is a vote. And our conversations earlier, we're sort of leaning towards this is a little problematic for the way we see this. So with those things said, what do you feel would be an acceptable size that is smaller than this? That would work for your needs versus, and just to be very clear on it, it's also, it's versus having approval for it at all. And so, uh, I guess the, the question is, I don't even know if we can ask that question, because we're not asking about the size, right? And that's not the variance. But we're asking for a second unit and, and we can probably limit that. Eric, is that correct or am I out of line in that statement?
There's, uh, so.
Sure, yeah. The size of the structure is not here for debate. The allowance of the structure is here for debate.
The accessory structure is.
Is the question, so it's.
Question.
Well, that, that's again, we could have looked at this as accessory structure, then we'd be here for.
The size.
Square footage. Because it was listed as a garage. That's why we went with it. You're allowed up to 30, you had 35 foot garage. We already had a garage, you only allow one garage.
So either way, we're still in the same boat. If we say we don't want the, if we don't approve the garage of that size, then we don't have to approve the garage at all.
If you decide that it shrinks down, it's more in character with the neighborhood.
Then we could have, okay, so it's, it's corrected.
Just, just a quick side note, um, I did quick math here. Every property is allowed a 30 by 35 garage, which is, you know, 1,050 square feet. This property being almost 30,000 square foot lot would be allowed, called 300 square foot accessory building. Without a variance.
Yep.
And so that's 1349 square feet. You took the.
Wait, what's 13, the garage they already have plus 300?
Well, if, if, let's, for instance, the garage was 30 by 35 max, then they keep in for a accessory structure, maximum size is about 300. So 1340 square foot total.
Garage.
What they have now is 41, existing, they're asking for 960, so that's 1441. So it's about 92 square foot more. Then they couldn't be allowed without the variance.
So there's.
Get the scale, of course, we're looking at.
A location problem.
Problem in size of instructors, you know.
And there, a garage can be two stories high?
Yeah, well, yeah, you could put a lot.
For practice. Yeah.
Is there a minimum size before it's no longer considered a garage? Like, is there a minimum size requirement?
It, it really depends, uh, the use of it. A shed would have to have, you want to park a vehicle, you have to have perfect surface, you know, wood. Perfect circle, you know, wood.
Hmm.
We, yeah, we have a garage size, I think it's twelve foot, a single car garage, minimum twelve foot.
Twenty something. Okay. So, so I just want to repeat what I think I heard you say, Kevin. Without twelve by twenties minimum. Okay. Um, what you said though is they don't need a variance for a garage if it's up to what size on this. Building we're talking about. They need a variance for a second garage.
That's the variance, correct.
Also, they can't do this anyways.
Unless you couldn't, you could not put a second garage on this property without a variance.
Without a, if they were doing an accessory structure, what's the size that they could have without a variance?
Three, uh, three hundred, twenty, oh, one percent. So twenty nine ninety seven. So say three hundred square.
But this one's nine hundred, is that right?
Nine.
So it's a third. Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
This is listed for variance purpose. You're saying pole barn, second garage for storage. Is the intention to travel your back? Into your backyard into the back of your house from this garage if you're using it for storage of vehicles? Is this really just seasonal in that? You would only be in and out during warmer weather or easily traverse to the backyard. I'm thinking of winter. And I don't know if you're gonna like put a walkway in your backyard, so you're gonna go from your. What you're asking for to the main house. Give me a little bit of detail of how you envision utilizing that space.
Yeah, I was planning on having the driveway to the back road. So there would be, can be parking in the winter and summer back there. I'd be walking from the house to the pole barn. I didn't have any plans of putting in a walkway or anything.
So you'll just be trundling through the snow. Pardon? So you would just put a truck through the snow?
Yeah, at this time, that's, I didn't have any plans for.
Okay, so you were planning on year round use?
Yeah.
Okay, because otherwise I was trying to figure out how is that working to travel from one to the other? It's still a distance. From your home to where you're requesting this pole barn.
Okay, Christian, do you have questions?
Not at this time, no.
Um, I'm, I'm assuming you're running electric, uh, obviously for a lift.
Electric gas.
Would it be heated as well?
It's still up in the air. I don't, maybe we spoke of that, maybe. Leaning towards possibly propane maybe in the future.
Okay.
But I haven't really talked to contractors or anything yet, but definitely electric, yes.
John?
You do a question.
Do we, go ahead.
Um, size wise.
What's your question?
Reasonably with a forty foot setback. And a space that is. Smaller in footprint. What would be your absolute minimum in footprint? So you're asking for thirty by thirty two. And that's two, the intention is at least two vehicles, correct?
Right.
Okay, so that's certainly a quite a depth of thirty two. For two, so that would give you a lot of space. So if you were thinking of something. That could still be useful to you in meeting your need, what would that look like instead?
Yeah, I don't know for sure. I think easily. Um, two feet down easily would be twenty eight by thirty two would be no problem and probably twenty eight by thirty. Would probably be fine too, to go. Smaller than that. I guess I'd have to, I may need to think about it some more.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, what would, so the, you mentioned that you have the twelve foot for, for the lift. The additional.
Yeah.
The additional roof height with, with the roof style, is that just because of the roof itself, it's not for the lift?
Just that, yeah, that's the roof. That's what they. That's what the contractor drew it out as with the peak roof.
Okay. Um, because I'm just wondering if I, the roof could be built differently so that you didn't have the, the, the additional, I guess, almost six feet on top.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I hadn't discussed any of that with the builder. That's what.
I believe twelve foot high would give you room for a full lift. Just twelve feet. Let alone eighteen. I, I mean, the whole thing's not. What's that?
Well, the roof, the roof would be.
More squared off.
Because it's regular trusses, so it's twelve foot wall. So it would be a flat, flat ceiling. So I don't have, you don't have space up to eighteen feet unless you go with some non-standard, non-standard truss, whatever. I don't know what those are. Then you can get more.
You can do a scissors.
You can get more like that.
Cathedral ceiling. But again, that's only going to give you limited space right in the middle.
In the middle.
Right. And they have two door, red door. So.
Again, there's garage, it's like that, right?
Any other questions from the board members? We're gonna need to talk about this afterwards, so.
I want to hear.
And I want to hear. Yeah, okay. So I'll have you have a seat for a minute. We're gonna do this a little different than the others because this needs more conversation. And, uh, and I would also like to ask if there's members from the audience that would like to ask questions or give feedback. Uh, there's anybody online that you know of?
I do not have anybody online any longer.
Please. Uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Goodwin. I live at Forty Hill Terrace, which is just to the right on that, on that, uh, diagram shown that.
On the, on the church side of the house.
No.
Oh, on the other, on the front side, got it.
Yes. Um, so I've lived there, I don't know. Over ten years, not quite fifteen. Um, I, I know a little bit about these lots. Um. The way the, the power lines go like between the houses, not, they're not at the road, just a little unusual, uh, for it. Um, and there's, there's four houses at the end here. I think mine is the first where. You can almost, they're almost kind of like a double lot where we've got our houses and then there's a lot behind us. That because the roads kind of converge.
Yeah, a little too small where.
It's too small for a house. So they, you know, they're just, they're just empty lots, basically. Um, so I have the largest one, I think they have next largest one of that gets smaller as you get on the road. There's, there's just four of us there, so. Um. I kind of see, you know, a pole barn structure as just, it's a smaller house. Like, sure, it's a large structure, but it's. It's a smaller house, so. Um, I actually wouldn't have a problem with it being there at all because on my. North side of the house, they live on the south side. On the north side of the house, there's. Not a pole barn structure, there's a house there because it has enough setback. I think, I think that one is forty feet back from the road. Um.
I think it's sixty.
Uh, it doesn't, doesn't look sixty. But.
The one that's.
The Churchill Roads, one.
Yeah, the one that will be here.
Yeah, so. Not, I'm not quite sure of that sixty because. On their property, it would be too close to the, I think the utility or the power lines are there. Um, so, you know. I think if they can get it closer to the power lines, I think that would probably make it okay. Just, I don't know what that right away needs to be or. You know, how much room they need to give for those power lines. Um. But I don't think it would look unnatural for it to be there because, you know, you've got these. You know, going down Churchill Road, you've got a house, 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 and then you've kind of got like empty lots. So what, you know, someone who was driving down the neighborhood would see would be just, you know, just a smaller structure, not quite the size of the house. So something like.
But it's, I think it's taller. Hmm, I think it's taller than the other structures too. And so this is a.
Tall than a house?
Eighteen feet? I don't know. They look like one story houses. I, I feel like it's taller than most of the houses I saw there, but.
I, I know the house, the, the house directly north of me is a two story house.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if it's taller than that, but.
Probably not.
Probably not.
Um, so you're okay with this?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay. And you're directly next door? Yes. Do you share the driveway? Is that that story you?
No, that's the, that's the house. That's the other property. I have a different driveway. Uh.
Other side though.
Yeah, other side. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's helpful too. Um, anyone else have any comments? Okay, we're gonna postpone this one still to the end. I'm sorry, it makes you wait a little longer, but it gives us a chance to talk when we're done to sort of hash it out. Um, which means I'm gonna jump to the next application. Or applications, I guess. Uh, twenty twenty five zero four one and zero four two, which is one, two, three Fox Chapel Road. Welcome. Good, how are you?
Justin Howell.
Wait, wait, say to the mic.
Okay, Justin Howell, one twenty three Fox Chapel Road.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Howell, you were before this board about two years ago?
Yep, yep, and we never did the driveway.
Okay, so give me some description of two, um, the differences between the two applications.
So the, the other one, um, was somewhat similar, but there was stone going. You know, further than what they're boxing out here. Um, you know, and ultimately like I actually brought, got this estimate, brought it to. The highway department. They said I was fine. And then it turned into a variance, then one variance and then two variances. Um, ultimately. My goal is to park a trailer there, especially winter time because it sits in the winter time and being able to utilize the garages. I'm on a curve. So it's, you know, people do drive faster in the neighborhood, so I don't want to have to jockey a trailer around in truck to get a vehicle out of the garage. At this point, there's three licensed drivers, you know, I have children, so that at some point, you know, they're gonna be living with me driving. Um, till they go to college or whatever they choose to do. Um, I want them to stay with me forever. I know that's not the case, but. Um, you know, so then there's going to be more vehicles and we like to utilize the garage. Because we do have a garage space. This is the first time my wife and I ever had a garage we can park in. Um, and my mother lives with me because there's the in-law portion. And you guys did a variance for that, you know, years ago, then thank you for that, but, you know, I, winter time, I like getting her in the vehicle inside. The garage as well, based on snow, things that nature. Um. So I just want to be able to park the trailer there. And the reason I'm trying to do stone is it's, you know, I'm willing to pay, but I have to pay, but. A trailer sitting on pavement is generally gonna have ruts over, you know, when a trailer sitting there over.
What kind of trailers?
So an enclosed trailer.
Like a, like a work trailer type thing?
Yeah, it's an enclosed twenty foot trailer.
Um. I will say something. You really made it look beautiful.
Well, it's still got some work to go.
The house looks great compared to what it was when it came in initially. I just want to.
Okay, thank you for that.
Done a nice job there. Um. It's independent of the request. I just wanted to say.
No, no, really.
Any other questions that you have for, because. We could figure that out.
So. The applications that are before us right now, um, as far as the stone goes, you want to keep the stone for where you have the extension on. The side of.
Yes, yes.
You're gonna pay.
Yes.
Okay, um. The forty two point five, how does that? Differ from what you had had?
Honestly, I can't, like, I think it was, we're trying to do forty four feet or forty seven. I can't recall, to be honest, and I think you guys. You know, gave me thirty seven and change, but we had the front facade of the house incorrectly. Or I did before, because the front facade of the house is like thirty two and a half to just match the driveway to the front facade. And then the trailer's eight and a half. You know, feet wide, so you know, ten feet to be safe, so you're not deterring, you know, into the grass or things that nature. Um, but I think. You know, that might have been my mistaken on the facade of the house or, you know, the guy that gave me the estimate, I. I think it was, I didn't have Western at that point. I had estimate from, uh, Rochester driveways. Maybe, I can't recall.
I, I don't know for sure. So you think it was a bad measurement is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, again, it's so long ago. Unfortunately, you know, I just, I can't recall a hundred percent.
Um, the corner of the stone portion that you're asking for, does that end up right on, um, the setback line?
So it's, it's within code for the property line. Um, you know, what is it, five foot? So I mean, it's not going to impede with that. I mean, even the code for driveway extensions, it's within the driveway code. I mean. To be honest, I drove around the neighborhood, I'm like, again, you know, I have a, a larger house, a larger garage, so, but I mean, there's over twenty five houses that have. Asphalt past the facade. Yes, there's not, there's only like two or three houses that have three car garage. So it's a little different, but I mean, they can utilize the space. You know, there's people, I'm sure they didn't pull permits, but there's stone. On the side of their houses, there's shared driveways and somebody poured concrete in the middle of it, and then they're parking something in between the two houses, you know? And again, I'm not, I'm just saying like, people are utilizing this space how they want, and I'm just trying to do the same.
The preference for the stone, is that cost or is it?
No, it's not cost. It's just a trailer sitting there. It's just gonna create divots over the winter time. You know, because winter time, the trailer would be used, you know, minimally.
Hmm.
But I mean, if, if we need to pave it, you know, I'll pave it and, you know, I'm fine with that.
Um, at the bottom of the driveway, how wide is, are you asking?
So I'm going to code, um, so I believe that's twenty two foot.
Twenty, twenty four at the max.
Okay, yeah, so it's whatever to make it to the max, just because I'm on a curve, you know, bringing a trailer into the driveway. Um, unfortunately, I already cut the ditch at this point and damaged my trailer, but. Um, ultimately, I'm within code and I already, you know, and I'm gonna make sure the cover pipes all situated that prior to. The driveway, doing the driveway, so.
Any other questions?
Yep. No, I actually prefer the stone pavement for this case, I think.
I'm, I'm the one who's saying lines as well. I mean, for trailer parking, you, the asphalt, they just think same.
Yeah, and I mean, my neighbors are cool with it. I mean, the guy next door, I'm close, if it's gonna impede or affect anybody. It would him, but I mean, honestly, he's happy I'm there just based on the condition of the house. You know, it was my father's house, you got to rest his soul, but you know, ultimately, he's just happy that I'm doing a driveway, I'm making the house nice. Eventually, I'm gonna do the lawn and other things as well. So, if it's, in my opinion, gonna affect anybody, it's gonna affect them.
Sure.
Or, you know, somebody across the street, you know, things that nature.
That wouldn't do any work. Thoughts?
No, I think this will need to be discussed.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Um.
Mr. Chairman, just for some education, uh, if this property line shifted five feet over. And applicant.
Five feet farther?
Further away from the house, you create a driveway extension. The width wouldn't be a concern at all.
Hmm, but because he's at the corner.
Because, because he's only, let's say he's ten feet to the property line. So as again, if you were to put a driveway extension. He would need a variance because driveway extension, you could put it back there, maybe halfway. And then the width variance would actually go away because you're allowed to go wider to utilize that area. The stone, yes, that still needs a variance.
But.
Because he can't go. Because, because it's so tight, because the garage is so tight to that property line.
Okay, so he has to stay out of the garage, basically.
The placement has to be.
Yeah, I mean, the driveway extension can be as close as five feet. The extent you could pay or put stone next to the garage for. Maybe half of that. The width, the depth of the garage. Still maintain the five foot. Um. If you was to do that, actually, like I said, the, the width of the driveway variance would go away. It wouldn't be.
Um, okay, are there any questions from members of the audience? You can come up. I'll have you have a seat for a moment.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have you come back up and even though we met you, you have to say it again.
Um, my name is Christine Jubey and I live at fifteen Gate House Trail. Um, when this was brought before the board before, um, I also agree that the house is much improved. It looks very nice. Um, I do object though to the width of the, uh, proposed driveway. Um, I think it is out of character with the neighborhood. Um, I said then, and I will say again, this is a residential neighborhood. Um, it's not, I think, necessarily appropriate for commercial vehicles to be stored on residential property. Um, the width of, um, the apron for the garage is, um, thirty two point five feet. I believe from the, um, yeah, the, yeah, thirty two and a half. I believe from the, um, yeah, the, yeah, thirty-two and a half feet. So if at thirty-two and a half feet, that would cover all three bays of the garage. Um, uh, I don't think it's appropriate for there to be stone next to the driveway. There is already stone that's been put down next to the garage. Um, there's, there's stone there now. Um. So I don't know if that's gonna be replaced with soil, but there's stone there now. Um, I also don't see um really why there needs to be stone there um for the, the storage of commercial vehicles. Um, I'm concerned if, you know, if we're saying that the asphalt would sink. Um, with a trailer on it, it seems to me that stone would um also sink and, um, you know, be very difficult to control. I'm concerned about, you know, traffic in and out of the driveway, and that stone being tracked into um the street, which is, you know, a residential street. Um. Um, the dri- I, I'm a little concerned that um there was a variance that was um given uh two years ago. But the driveway still is not paved, um, and driveways are supposed to be paved, and I'm just wondering. You know, how long a driveway can sit unpaved? Um, cuz it's, it's, you know, more than, obviously, more than two years it's been sitting there unpaved. Um, even though there was already a variance given, so, um, I just wanna say that I think that it would be out of character for the neighborhood. Um, to have this uh stone um at the side of the driveway, and that the driveway should, there's. There's not really a residential reason for the driveway to be that wide, especially seeing how at thirty-two and a half feet, it would be wide enough for the garages. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the audience? Okay, um, I think we can. Oh, that's a good point. Would you like to address what was just said? Uh, thank you.
So I, I do have some stone there, because the last meeting. I, I'm, I must have misunderstood, I thought I could put some stone, as long as it's within the five foot of the property line. Which I'm more than happy to remove that stone. But I'll be honest, I thought that I was able to do that after the last meeting, and the reason the driveway wasn't done is due to funds. And now I already have a deposit down, and we're just waiting to see what happens with this to excavate and things of that nature. There isn't commercial vehicles, I have a trailer and a truck. You know, I, I am self-employed, and I do work W-two as well. I mow lawns in the summer, there's a million guys that had their vehicles. In, in their driveway, I have an enclosed trailer, you can't see a piece of equipment. Everything looks nice, you know, so it's all enclosed, but there's twenty-five trailers in the neighborhood. You know, it's the same as somebody having, you know, a different type of trailer, that type of thing.
Do you plan on having uh? The entire, the, okay, the part of the uh map that's in green, is that also gonna be, um, it's like the extension, so like a curb goes on?
So that's, that's like the, if you're looking at the thing, that's where it's boxed out and paved.
Yeah.
Like, it's within code, that's just gonna be like paved, because now I'm going to the code width at the. Um, out of the street, so that's just tapering it up to the facade of the thirty-two and a half.
What I asked basically is, so the only part that's gonna be stone is the part that's shaded in orange.
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so it won't be, there won't be, there won't be any stones down near the road.
No.
There's the concern that, um, that it would be.
I mean, at this point, there probably is stones getting in the road, cuz I mean, the driveway is, I mean, it's a. I don't think my dad ever did anything with it. I'm pretty sure it's an original driveway to the house from the sixties, so.
But it's not, it's gonna be paved except for the.
The orange portion.
Yeah. Fourth will be the only part then.
Yeah.
Okay.
You plan on paving the entire driveway, right? Except for this orange part portion?
Oh, yes, yes, it'll all be paved. Yes, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if I showed you guys the estimate, I put in the estimate, it shows, it says the box out and paved on it. But yeah, that would be all. Oh, yes, yeah, the whole driveway would be paved, just the only thing changing would, from what's existing is the mouth would. Get wider per code, and then it would be paved up, you know, thirty-two and a half with, you know, it'll taper from the, was it the twenty-fourth road? Taper up to that, and then you'd have the stone tapering off. To the um orange portion on the diagram.
No, what, what kind of trailer is gonna be there again? It's always like a commercial trailer.
It's, it's an enclosed trailer.
So it's like a, like a tow behind trailer?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. It would be, it would be heavy enough for it to actually make the cut or asphalt sag and also what the.
No, I mean, the trailer itself, probably with everything in it, probably weighs six thousand pounds max. So the weight of a vehicle, like a truck.
The point that he's making, and I know this experience too, when it sits still for the winter.
Right.
At six thousand pounds, um, you know, six or whatever the heck that is, and you get little divots, and at the, at the neck or whatever. The tongue.
The jack, yeah.
At the tongue of the jack, you get a spot there too.
I didn't know if there was any sort of stabilizers, like on a camper or anything like that.
I mean, maybe, yeah, you could maybe, if you're good enough, back it on, like, a two-by-six, and then might disperse it some. A bigger imprint.
It's gonna be huge, a huge expanse, but.
Was that a?
Concrete was his comment.
Yeah, concrete would handle, but.
Yeah. Um, okay, so we need to, I think we still need to have a discussion about this. Um, so we'll do the same.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, this more information, again, if, if. If we were to put stone driveway extension next to the garage.
It's nothing.
And he was to pave this, the front of this, all of it, the orange portion included, there'd be zero variances required.
The orange portion doesn't require variance at forty.
If he, if he was to put the driveway, the stone driveway extension, no, it works from the front wall of the garage, back.
Right, I agree.
A distance, you know, I think you could actually, I did some quick measurements, probably twenty foot of stone, ten foot wider. As long as he maintains the five-foot side setback to that stone. Yes, forward of the garage, you could do that forty-two and a half, if you're asking. Paved, it'd be, no variances required.
You could have forty-two paved.
Because of the driveway extension, yes.
Because you gotta be able to drive.
We get allowances to get to that driveway, which would be legal in this case, if it was five feet.
I think, thank you. Any questions?
Or were you aware that was an option, possibly?
No, I, I was unaware.
Okay. Would that be something that you would be preferring to do if you could be able to?
I mean, I'll honestly do whatever I need to, to utilize the space, um, you know, again, it. I prefer the stone, just cuz why spend the money for something that's gonna get damaged, but if I, you know, if I need to do pavement. In order to kinda get to the point, I'm, what I'm trying to do, I mean, I will.
My point would be, if you were to be able to get twenty foot of stone next to your garage, you could, in theory, pull your trailer back there, park it on that stone.
Yeah, or at least the tie, the tires would be, in a worst case, the tongue.
Sticking out.
Yeah, which, you know, it is, it is what it is, cuz I, the corner of the garage to the property line is tight, so like, it tapers. Like, if you did a stone to there, it would taper, so you'd, you'd, you know, I just have to get pretty close to the house.
The, the rear corner of the garage is ten and a half feet from.
Yeah, yeah, so it tapered to five and a half.
You're more.
Yeah, yep, yep.
In fact, driveway extensions can be as wide as twelve.
Okay, okay.
As long as you maintain that five feet to the property.
Okay, okay, so I ultimately, if that's the route we have to go, I could. Get the tires onto the stone, and then the, the tongue, cuz I mean, it's with the tongue, it's twenty-four foot.
Yeah.
That would be for both applications at this point, if that's what Mr. Howell.
If he was to pave the orange portion that's shown. And put stone.
Put the stone.
To the garage.
Next to the garage.
We don't need any of this.
No variances required.
Will you do that?
I mean, I.
I don't wanna give you a variance, if we don't have to.
Oh, well.
And so you're gonna be able to get your result. Uh, a little more paving than you maybe wanted, but you'll get your result.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I was unaware, and I mean, what, like I said, whatever I have to do, and, I mean, before.
That's sufficient, is my question.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it is, you know, if I can do the, do the extension. Like, so the stone I put there two years ago, I can leave there.
Correct.
I'll move it and put it back or whatever, um, and then, you know, the tires of the trailer will at least be able to get on the stone, and then the tongue, if the tongue. Puts a little divot there, I'm sure I can figure something out. It's easier to disperse the weight of the tongue, and just, you know, when I store.
The tire, then the tongue, it would just be.
Well, I don't think the tongue would make, cuz the trailer's twenty foot.
Right, the only thing that would be on the pavement.
Would be the tongue.
Well, the most of all, it would be on the tires, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I just moved the weight inside the trailer, so there's less tongue weight. Yeah, yes.
So my question very directly is, if you do what Kevin just said, and you still need to finish the permit, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna apply for the permit and everything.
If you work with him to get the permit the way that's needed, so you don't need a variance, that fulfills your need.
I'm good with that.
All right, then we're gonna cancel this variance.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that, and then.
So this variance is, uh, is not needed anymore? You'll have to withdraw.
So if you withdraw the request for the variance, because you're going to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay paving, like, up, up to the fa- facade, ten foot over.
Anything for the garage, yes, you pay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a hundred percent okay with that.
Uh, Heather, were you gonna say something? Okay. Um, so, tell me that you formally withdraw these two variants.
I formally will withdraw these variances.
Then you'll work with, with the building department.
Okay.
Highway for the.
Okay, so, um, deal with Craig.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll get all of your regarding.
Okay, and then I can get in touch with Western, just for the changes, and that.
Uh, Starwood Craig Barber and the highway.
You finalize it first.
Okay.
And then, whatever you do with your contract.
Okay, okay.
Suggestion.
Go ahead, come up with.
Um, that's a suggestion, so since it has to be paved anyway, I believe the town codes that you, you can do concrete or asphalt, right? For the driveway.
Hmm, yeah.
Um, if your concern is about replacing the asphalt because of the damage that would be caused by the equipment. I think that would be voided if you use concrete pavement.
Okay.
Um, this is a stronger surface, however, it would be significantly more expensive than asphalt. Um, but I offer that.
If I did go that route, do I have to do anything differently per the permit?
To, to put concrete down?
Concrete in that orange area.
No, you could do.
Cuz that's part of the driveway.
It'd be driver, yeah.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know.
That part asphalt.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah.
Just, all right, so we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably a better solution for you anyway, so this is good. Okay, so we will.
I'm all set, thank you.
I think.
Yep. Um, so now we still have to have our conversation about, so with that, so what'll happen, uh, just so you understand what happened. For a moment, I closed the meeting, we talked about it, then we opened it again, so we're not closing it and saying you're done, we're closing it to talk, then we open it again.
For Hill Terrace.
For Hill Terrace, and what that means is, um, when we're closed officially for that, for a period of time, we can't. You'll hear us talking, but you can't talk back to us at that point in time, okay, so, just a little procedural component. You'll hear us, you'll wanna say something, but don't at that moment. So for right now, we'll close it at eight o'clock. Uh, we'll have a few minutes here for our, our conversation, so what do we, what do we think? I, I still think it's giant, and in my opinion, I heard, I heard the neighbor say that he was approving, he was approving of it. Uh, he likes it, he's fine with it, I think it's very large, and I think it's very far forward.
My problem, my biggest problem right now is the height of that roof. And if there was any way to get it more in line of a typical shed, then it might be more reasonable. Because of. Because it essentially is a very large. Backyard on a roof, I guess it's still considered a front yard, right?
Isn't the roof like it's normal? Like a normal, um, garage? The height, isn't the height of the roof like a normal garage?
I, I would say, I don't know, but I would say no, because it's twelve-foot wall, that's, I. Maybe it is, but a typical garage wall would be nine foot.
And then if you had a eight, eight-twelve pitch roof on it, it'd be all eighteen feet.
Right, the next one I've done, when I think of our, you know.
This is, looks like this is a lower pitched roof. Your typical fullback construction has. Four-four. Yep, four-twelve pitch, so, we're not going any lower than that with the pitch.
Is it considered two front yard, instead of having a?
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz you have the driveway, you have the egress, and.
Yeah.
That's why. Um. So two things that I heard during the conversation, one is that you would accept a forty-foot setback. And two is that you would accept it at twenty-eight by thirty. And we have to have smaller. Ideally, we want the smallest variance possible, and that's acceptable to all parties. Eight forty, so it's a hundred-ish feet off, right?
And he said he would be, like, we, you'd be willing to go down to a twenty by.
Twenty-eight by thirty.
Twenty by thirty.
Twenty by thirty. So the hundred.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just a comment that we heard, so we can take that into account.
How are we with forty setback?
I'm better with forty than thirty-five.
Yeah.
I still think it's pretty far forward, in my opinion, compared to the other houses.
Based on, based on where they're rowlined it. Yes.
Yes.
And because they're limited by how the overhead lines were placed.
This application's limited, right? The others are not limited, because it goes in their backyard, I believe.
Right.
Right down the middle of the backyard.
I also, like, I'm also imagining it, you know. If we're okay, if we're talking about this structure here, I'm also thinking about. What if every lot in the neighborhood that could do this did that?
Well, you have a neighbor who is directly next to, and has a larger side lot.
It was already said.
Having an issue. Could do the same. Should he have issues with storage and cars and.
Whatever.
Boats, and he could win the lottery and be like, woo-hoo.
Right.
So, in terms of usable space. Especially considering the intense hill that they drive up. With the lot and share, is it reasonable with changing? Reduction of. Increase, look at that, setback. And making the imprint hundred. Square foot smaller. Bill, providing relief to the resident. Whom, at some point, the reason for the height is more of, I may put a lift in, and need the height in order to do so. Which.
Did you drive there? What did you think visually from that?
Um, visually, I think forty would probably look a little less intrusive than thirty-five.
Hmm, and slightly smaller.
And given the fact that they were sold these huge lots, that limits. In certain aspects, I mean, why didn't they just have everybody's entrance off of, for chill instead of Hill Terrace?
Cuz they could double those capacity of houses.
I think they originally planned on having a house there.
Kevin, is, there's no, um, there's no height restriction for residential lots, like, uh. You know, if you're, you're structuring, ten feet. You know, there's no like vertical rise, um, the distance there.
Odd number in our code for. First floor, second floor of a home, it's like twenty, twenty-one feet above the first floor elevation to the. It, it.
It's weird.
It's very weird, yeah, I was gonna say, it's not something that's.
Okay.
I don't wanna say it's not fourth, but.
Right.
There's nothing for accessory structure of rocks that limit.
The height.
We, we had one on Western Meter Road, where you put a loft in, down when they had motorcycles. And snowmobiles with a lift to put up onto this loft of storage. So that was, that was a two-story detached garage section. Of course, we didn't have a attached garage at the time either, so.
So, what's your thoughts?
The other, the other point I may make is shrinking the building. Shrinking its footprint. But leaving the twelve-foot sidewall is now starting to look oddly shaped. How long, taller than it is, not taller than it's wide, but it's.
Gonna look taller, it's, yeah, it's gonna give you that impression of it.
It's really.
The other option would be to dress up the, make it cottagey look for its. Churchill Road.
Yeah, it's not much.
Okay, so what are you, what are your thoughts?
I think it better that it's forty feet back, than the thirty five feet, I know that there's trees involved that they don't wanna cut down. And I'm, I'm, before they don't cut the trees down, if they're mature trees, um. If they could do a small, slightly smaller pole barn or second garage, whatever you call it, um. I don't think that it's. And I, I, I'm, I'm not against, you know, against it being there, as far as the height goes. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be much taller than neither house, I mean, that, any two story home, I mean, I don't think that.
So you're okay with it?
I, I think I'm, I'm, yeah.
With the modified request.
With the modified request, I'm okay with it, yes. Which is forty foot.
Forty foot offset is my recommendation, what I would. I think we should shrink the building twenty by thirty, I heard what Kevin said, but I feel like you can have the same pitch anywhere, it's just a different height. It'll be, I'm making up a number of foot shorter.
Yeah. The other thing I may make a point of, bring to your attention, but this, when we're packing a front, the side that's gonna be facing Hill Terrace. Is just a blank wall.
So what are you suggesting?
Not that, I just, again, there's nobody here from Hill, Churchill, excuse me, Churchill Road that. Speaking against this at all, however, this is gonna be forty feet off the road, a big blank wall.
Is that gonna be the side?
Yeah, so it looks like, I believe that the.
You could put trees next to it.
We're talking about what they, yeah, Churchill Road, it could easily be well.
Yeah. We could ask them why they decided to do it that way and not have it straight out to the road.
They're posing a, an low garage. And low garage, so they come in.
I mean, I, I like. I do like the idea of putting. A window on the side facing the road, because then it breaks up the massive wall potentially of the whole farm. I'm actually, because it is between two roads, and it's not a backyard, so to speak, it's literally. Yeah.
You're okay with that? So. If it was me, I would put, uh, you'd have to put some documents in there at the bottom. It's gonna be different than what you initially started.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to rewrite it.
Can we actually say that we can add a window and that's not our purpose? It's not part of the.
Of course. And that'll have to be in there cuz we're proving a garage. So we have to say.
Right, so we're approving the twenty by.
Twenty eight by thirty.
Twenty eight by thirty.
Not to exceed that, and the, and the offset one, we're gonna prove it forty.
Right.
So you need a couple of minutes.
Yes.
So we need a couple, you hear what we're saying, right? Oh, hang on, can't talk.
But you still need a couple of minutes to finish up the discussion.
Can I open it or just? You can open it while it's ready. Yeah, I'm gonna open it. So we'll open back up at, I think it says twelve minutes after.
Yeah.
Thirteen minutes after, we're opening the session back, um, for sake, you heard what we were saying, I'm sure. Um, so we are reducing the offset that we're allowing you to have, uh, it's obviously one of the concerns that we've been talking about, so you have to go five feet back. Now, you just cut, we also are gonna, it sounds like we're gonna approve the second, um, garage, but there's gonna be a stipulation, it's gonna be a little bit smaller. So you take up part of that offset as well, so it's not so much further forward. Um, I think we'll, your, your neighbor was very instrumental, I believe, because I'm pretty confident we're all gonna say no, so, uh.
Well, yeah, if you wanna go up here to the podium, you wanna talk to us at all.
If you want, well, no need, and when we're done, I'll have you come back up while we read the, the motions and that.
We'll be stipulating that, uh. Looks to be twenty eight by thirty as well.
Yes, twenty by thirty and forty.
So the twenty eight feet, what width, so basically. When the shed is built, that's gonna give them an extra two feet, is that right?
Yeah, so.
So really what's gonna happen is what is going.
They lose three feet of backward space effectively.
It's only three feet?
Well, if it's five feet that we're cutting off the forty foot and two feet wide. That we have requested it not be.
Right.
Then you're effectively.
Right.
And then down from thirty two to thirty.
So when they build it, it'll be five feet further back. But only three feet further forward.
It's thirty two feet, entry side is thirty two feet. Depth is thirty feet.
Well, it's two feet off each.
Right, so either way.
Do we ask them a question, could we, we ask them a question, make sure this is that, this is on the thing you worked with or is? Okay.
That was testable.
Okay.
Sizeable, never big enough.
Never big enough. Are there any project cards in there? Out of curiosity, is there any project cards? What is it? Do you have one? What model, we gotta see.
I mean, it's three oh two, two eighty nine badge.
Who's this?
I'm too old to go fast anymore. Yeah, quick story, my dad, um, before I was born, he had one of the, uh, there was a, it was a GT three fifty. The original, like, which was like five hundred made of, Shelby, yeah, he had that and they sold it because I was bored, it's my fault. Right, cuz it was not a family car, so they. They sold it.
Maybe a Christian that Shelby, huh?
No, it's not. Yeah.
It'll be the whole. White version of the Tesla? It's only three hundred fifty. Really? Did you hear the car?
No.
That's right. Yep. You got it?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll have you come back up while we read the, um. Resolutions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with regard to application number VBA twenty twenty five dash zero three nine and zero four zero. For an area of variances, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has one duly advertised in held public hearing, two has considered all relevant information, and three has considered potential benefit. To the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the zoning board appeals makes the following findings of fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Due to the location of the parcel, the property has two front yards, the addition of the second garage will fill in a gap in the streetscape. Creating more continuous and cohesive pattern of development. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative, due to the location and photography of the property. Storage of the vehicles as desired is not feasible by other means. Variance requested is substantial, while the request is substantial, the second garage will improve. A cohesive pattern of existing structures in the neighborhood. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical environmental conditions, the second garage is not perceived to have a negative impact on physical environmental conditions at this time. The difficulty relating to the variance was self-created, while the variance was self-created, other findings of fact support the variance request. And be it therefore, or be it further resolved, that based upon above findings, the above findings. The zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variances as presented, and be it further resolved. That this approval shall be subject to the following conditions. The garage footprint shall be reduced to twenty eight feet by thirty feet and be allowed a forty foot setback.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Beth, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, the motions carry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
Have a good night.
It'll look nice.
Once it's gonna be done.
Well, I have deposits down already.
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't catch that part.
So with that, we can close the meeting at, I think it says eighteen minutes after.